This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for February 6, 2023. The city council meeting is conducted in the traditional in-person format at city council chambers here at City Hall. You can virtually view the meeting at the GoToMeeting access that's found on our website. We accept public comments for people who come in person, but if you're not here in person, we don't take those comments, although you can still send us an email or give us a call. Okay, let's see who's here.
Alderman Ashower, absent. Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman, also absent. Alderman Christel?
Here.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener.
Here.
Excellent. And the two Aldermen who are not here are excused. Stand as you are able, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's nice when you can announce awards. The Park District Outstanding Special Event Award, and we have two representatives of the Park District here this evening. Come on up. Yeah, please, and tell us all about it.
All right. On behalf of the Warrenville Park District's staff and Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank you for your time tonight to recognize the outstanding collaboration and working relationship that exists amongst governmental entities in Warrenville. Two years ago, Sherry Potter approached me with the idea of holding a special event here in Warrenville called the Multicultural Festival. This inaugural event took place on Saturday, June 11, at the City Hall complex. The multicultural festival included a student poster contest, entertainment in all areas, including Irish dancers, salsa, mambo, African drum and dance, Funka Desi, which is a band member added to their cultural and artistic vibe into a mix representing a unified sound and reminded us how connected we are. Food trucks were also involved, providing a variety of foods from many ethnic backgrounds. There was even an area where games were set up to play that tied back to a number of different cultures. I would like to thank the TAC Committee, along with City Council and the whole community of Warrenville for embracing this event, where everyone was not only invited but also welcome to attend. It is with great pride that we share the Illinois Park Recreation Association has awarded the Warrenville Park District the overall winner for Outstanding Program and Special Event for the Warrenville Multicultural Festival that took place last week in Chicago as part of our statewide conference. This award is presented to public agencies for outstanding and unique achievements in program development and implementation and special event planning. Special thanks to the Warrenville Park District Board of Commissioners and the City of Warrenville for making recreation a priority in Warrenville. This is a coveted statewide award, and this honor is shared with all the members of our staff, our partners, and community members. I would like to present this plaque to the City of Warrenville, recognizing you for the pivotal role that you took in supporting the event and diverse programming in the community. Congratulations to all.
Thank you for the cooperation, and we'll do it again, right?
Next year.
We've got it all set up. Excellent. We will display this prominently and proudly.
Thank you.
As long as we're on the subject of awards, the City of Warrenville, again, thanks to Warrenville PD's excellent work, the National Award for 2022 for National Night Out. We are always, it seems like the last few years, every single year, recognized for the excellence of our program, for the size of our community. All of it has very special requirements to get this award, and it's all done by the size of the community. So Warrenville is quite well represented in the last few years. I think this is our fourth in a row, Chief, if I'm not correct. So that excellence means a lot to the community. It's a wonderful event. It's very well attended, and we've been pretty lucky with the weather. So let's keep that up. So congratulations, Chief. Okay, we are in the midst of our budget season, and we generally have one or two presentations from the different departments at each meeting going forward. Tonight, we're going to begin with the Administration Department FY 2024 Budget Presentation, excuse me, Budget Presentation, followed by the Finance Department FY 2024 Budget Presentation. So we have Assistant City Administrator Alma Morgan tonight to make this presentation. Welcome, Alma.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here. So, as you stated, tonight I will be presenting the Administration Department's Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Overview. I will start with the, whoop, sorry, trying to get this to work. Okay, we'll go manual. Pardon me during technical difficulties.
One of these days, we'll have to replace these computers from 1996.
There we go. It worked well in rehearsal. So we'll start with the Fiscal Year 23 Decision Packages, and we'll touch on the status of those. And then I will touch on the Fiscal Year 23 Department Accomplishments, followed by our ongoing priorities that we'd like to focus on in Fiscal Year 24, and then we'll wrap up with the 24 Decision Packages. Okay, so as you can see, I have the progress listed here for our 2023 Decision Packages. We successfully recruited a Communications Coordinator in July of 2022, Paula Craft. We are happy to have her join our Administration Department. The decision package for the Computer Replacement Project is on track to be finished before the end of this fiscal year. We just wrapped up Phase 2, and Phase 3 is the final phase, and we anticipate beginning that in the coming weeks and having that completed before the end of this fiscal year. The multi-factor authentication and the community survey decision package projects are also anticipated to be completed before the end of this fiscal year. And then that leaves us with the council tablets that we did have to postpone to Fiscal Year 24 due to some staffing transitions within our department. We just weren't able to get to that. So taking a look in review of what we've done so far in Fiscal Year 2023 is recruitment, retention, and engagement. So just to give you a little idea of what that means, since May 1 of 2022, we've conducted 60 interviews. We've recruited 10 new employees, hired 10 new employees, and we've processed 17 resignations and retirements. That does not include any of the Volunteer Commission members. In retention, we piloted the Summer Hours Program here at City Hall, where we closed early on Fridays during the summer months. That went over very well, and we plan to do that again moving forward this coming summer. We also implemented the five days of vacation for new hire employees, for new hire non-union employees to utilize after 90 days of employment. And we found that program to be extremely successful for new hires as well.
Muted.
Thank you. And another program that we implemented for retention is we increased the Basic Life Insurance Program from $25,000 to $50,000. That is a city-paid benefit, and it helps bring us more in line with our surrounding and comparable communities as to what they're offering for new benefits for new hires. And then on the engagement aspect, we also surveyed our employees for some of the programs that we've offered in the past, our Benefits Fair and our Wellness and Flu Shot Event. We wanted to find out what it was that they wanted to see at those events, any feedback that they had for us, and with the information that we gathered, we do plan to implement some minor changes this coming year. We supported IDEC objectives by spotlighting the holidays that celebrate inclusion and diversity. We included those holidays in the city's newsletter and on the website and with Facebook communications. And we also supported their attendance at the National Night Out Event and the Multicultural Festival, as well as other events to help bring awareness to their commission and to gather feedback from the community as well. So moving on to increased communications, with Paula on board, the city has significantly increased its communications throughout. So I'd like to share a few statistics with you. Since July of 2022, the city website has seen over 89,000 new user visits to the website. The visits to the Facebook page since July of 2022 has increased by over 60%. And Facebook posts in the same period in 2021, July 2021 through December of 2021, reached about 14,500 accounts. When we compared it to this last year, July 2022 to December 22, those posts have reached over 44,700 accounts. So as you can see, it's a huge difference in our communications. Paula also implemented the FYI Warrenville e-newsletter blast. We have over 800 subscribers to that. And another interesting statistic is that the national email open rate for government e-newsletters is about 20%. So that's when somebody opens their email and actually views the content. The City of Warrenville open rate for that newsletter is over 50%. So we're doing pretty good with communications. The Electrical Aggregation Program was temporarily suspended for 18 months. We will plan to revisit that and get some feedback from our consultant prior to the 18 months expiring. The people franchise agreement was renewed, and we will continue to support other departments in regards to economic development, human resources support, and of course, IT projects. So that brings us to Fiscal Year 24, and what do we plan to focus on? We have our ongoing priorities of continued recruitment, retention, and engagement. The employment market continues to prove to be very difficult at this time. Recently, our Police Department did a recruitment for police officer applicants and only received 48 applications. It is low nationwide, but in comparison to previous years, we used to receive over 100 applicants for that position. So we will be continuing to work on recruitment, retention, and engagement, evaluating our benefits, evaluating our compensation packages, and wanting to keep those employees staying here in Warrenville. We plan to continue to support our volunteer boards and commissions and continue to support our other city departments. We have new projects coming up, such as the search for a new ERP, a special census coming up, and of course, additional IT projects. And we hope to continue to evaluate the AV room upgrades. That's a project that we haven't gotten to yet, but we hope to get to in Fiscal Year 24. And then, of course, we plan to go out to RFP for IT managed services. All right, so that brings us to our decision packages. You can see the city council tablets are carried over from Fiscal Year 23, and we have two new strategic, two new decision packages that will be presented to you at the March 18 City Council Budget Meeting. The first one is the identifying a facilitator for the strategic plan, and the second one is the citywide facilities and space needs study to evaluate the unique needs of each of our buildings, which is City Hall, Public Works, and the Police Department. So we continue to expect Fiscal Year 24 to be challenging, yet very exciting, with a variety of projects and activities supporting other city departments, while we continue to acclimate to our new roles and responsibilities in our department. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Alma. Excellent, as always. Questions from the council? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I was particularly enthused and excited to hear about the impact of the communications that's resulted as a part of, you know, filling that job position that we've wanted for so long. And I just wondered if you have thoughts on expanding and continuing that uptick in communications as outreach to our citizens?
We do. Paula has some projects in mind to continue with expanding communication and outreach. One of the things that she's found is, in today's day and age, with electronic communication, it needs to be short, little snippets of information that people can read in a minute or less, because otherwise, we lose their attention. So she has been working diligently with other departments and coming up with ways to be able to communicate information in small, little increments. And then if somebody wants more information, there's a link where they can read more if they have the time. So that's just one idea that she has in place.
Great. And if there's any chance, as the, I guess, the landscaping matures near the, when the Trailhead Project is finished, having some kind of grand opening ceremony or ribbon cutting, I think, would be a nice outreach event for our community to have, if and, you know, when it's completed and when everything's mature enough to be able to have footfalls across, you know, the turf and so forth. So just for your consideration. But thank you very much for the report and all the outstanding accomplishments.
Thank you.
You speak for us all. Anyone else with a question or comment? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. Thank you for what, for these presentations are so helpful as we go into the budget. But a sort of a strange thing, I guess I want to thank you all for, and that is with, and it really involves all the city staff, but it starts with administration sometimes, how rapidly you get things done from, let's say, my perspective, when I get a call from a citizen, or I have some question, and I don't exactly know who I should contact, or what I should say on behalf of the city, or whatever. And it is so instantly handled that it's sometimes I just wonder how this can happen. So whatever form of communication you guys have up there with each other, it really works well, because that allows me to get back to a citizen, or me to answer a question, so I can figure something out. But it's happened the whole 12 years I've been here. But things get more complicated as the city grows and as we get involved in more things, so there are more questions, there are now more people in Warrenville. And so I am just always feel such a sense of gratitude and that my questions can get answered and that citizens can get responded to so quickly. And it goes out to all the departments. I mean, it's happened with every single one of them that I know, that, and I think over the years, I've had experience trying to get information out of the departments, and it just happened so fast. So I'm just thanking everybody that they start writing quickly and get these emails answered and get information to me. It's just great. So I think that's, I think that's part that doesn't get talked about very much when you look at your responsibilities. I think it takes a lot of time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alma, well done. You needn't have worried earlier today. It went beautifully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A comment from the city administrator.
I just want to draw attention to the fact that in your packets are also the department work plans that go along with these budget presentations. So if there are any questions about the work plan, we will be carrying those forward as part of the budget process.
Okay, great. Thank you. And welcome, Kevin, our Finance Director.
There we go.
All right, we're set.
Thank you very much. Mine will be brief. We don't do anything exciting. We don't build roads. We don't build any buildings. We don't approve any buildings. But I will say that this last year has been the most challenging year of my career. I've been doing this over 30 years now, and this last year, in all honesty, has been tough. There's been a lot happening in our department. We've spent a lot of time, as you're well aware, on the ERP, and Senior Account Beltran, who's no longer with us, unfortunately, and I have spent a lot of time during the last, well, four years, but certainly a lot during this last year, trying to keep this thing on track. Some of the bigger areas we ran into with leave management for employees has not ever worked. We are unable to track their vacation time and sick time, that kind of thing. We spent a lot of time doing that manually after the fact, which you can imagine takes a lot of extra time and a lot of extra keying into an Excel file, just to make sure we're on top of all of that. And we have kept that up to date, so everybody's actually where they ought to be. The other thing is, we are in the process now of making a full conversion for payroll into ADP. Currently, our employees enter their time in the ERP, which then has to be converted into another file, which gets dumped into ARP or ADP, so that ADP can actually do all the calculations. And then we have to return that information back in our system, so that we can create a journal entry. Now, that's a lot more than you want to know, but it's a lot of extra work that we spent a lot of time doing now that we should not have to do and will not have to do once we get ADP up and fully implemented for all of our employees. And what that means is they will be entering their time remotely through their phone, or they can do it through a computer. It'll remove a whole step of entry for us, is that one, it has to go between two systems. It'll all be in one. It should make a whole lot easier for us to process. The other area, we've spent a lot of time in is accounts payable. For the last four years, we've done dual entry. We've entered everything into both the ERP and the outgoing MSI system, which has remained the system of record all the way through. And again, that's twice the work all the way through. And we are in the process now of reverting back to a single system, which then will knock that work in half and make life a whole lot easier on us. The challenge we've had for the last three months is when Leo Beltran left. He left at the beginning of November, and we've spent the last three months doing a lot of extra work within our department, everybody trying to get their hands on everything he was doing to make sure that we stay on top of it. We have had to bring in some outside help, because I could not keep up with everything that had to be done. We are utilizing a temp through GovTemp. The temp we have was a former finance director in another community and has been extremely helpful in getting us caught up. And also, it always helps when I have somebody to bounce things off of, who understands what we're doing, and to make sure that I stay on track with the way we need to be doing things, and if there's any other way that might be a way that we could consider doing things. So she's been extremely helpful in that regard. We are also continuing the hiring process to replace that job. We did go through a series of interviews, and we have made an offer. At this point, I've not heard if that offer has been accepted or not, and I don't know if anybody's heard. It is really my desire to have that person onboard, boarded before the end of the fiscal year, so that they can help with things like all the audit schedules and everything that we need to do. Despite everything, we did have some successes this year. We received our 29th consecutive award for Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GFOA, and we've submitted the FY 22 audit report for consideration for what would be our 30th award as well. And there's no reason at this point to assume that that won't happen. So I'm looking forward to that happening. Another smaller one, but it's kind of fun for us, is that we actually have all these internal controls and external controls to protect taxpayer money. There were two instances during the last year where there was external fraud perpetrated on our accounts payable checks. We have a system in place at the bank. It's Positive Pay, and what that means is we submit the information for all the checks that we issue to the bank, amount and payee. When it goes through the banking world, if those things do not match, it's halted, and we have to make a decision if what the bank has caught is accurate, or if we'd like that stopped. In these two instances, there was one where the amount of the check was changed, and the other one where the payee was changed. In both instances, those were stopped, and police reports were filed, and the police department has been pursuing those as we've gone on. So the goal for next year is to establish a working relationship with the incoming city treasurer. It's been a while since we've got anybody in the position. I'm really looking forward to having the city treasurer there to work with us and somebody that I can talk to on occasion, like I've been doing with this temporary help we have now. As we edge out of the ERP, we're going to need to come up with new budget planning process. We're currently using ERP for that, but when we're out of the ERP, we won't have that available to us anymore, so we'll be working on alternative ways to prepare that. The other two items here are the financial assistance for the special census. We'll be making estimates on the revenue that that will bring in once that's completed. And then also, we'll be assisting with the two open collective bargaining agreements, which will open up at the end of the year, and we'll have to work and assist and provide all the financial analysis for that. We'll be assisting with the new ERP selection, although the way it's set up this time around, it won't involve me as much as it did in the past, which I'm grateful for, but we'll certainly be there to assist with that. And one of the things that has frustrated me a lot over this year has been our inability to provide regular financial updates to the city council. The good thing to that is we're doing pretty well for this year. And actually, when we present the budget, you'll be able to see that, that we've done exceptionally well for this year, that we've made a nice recovery from where things were during the pandemic. And then we will also be experiencing an abatement of property taxes that'll be related to the debt service, which we're working on now. And while that has not been finalized, that would be part of our process. And it's not anything we've done in the past, so it'll be a little new to all of us and to me. So that is about the excitement I have for next year and for this year. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Before questions, just a comment. You indicated early on in your presentation that the amount of difficulties that your department has faced in the last year and how hard it has been. I just wanted to clarify that those difficulties are almost wholly on the shoulders of an underperforming outside vendor that did not do their job, and it was not at all because our staff wasn't doing their job. You've done the job of three or four staffs put together to make up for the fact that this other outside agency has not been doing its job. So we thank you very much for that. We appreciate the fact that it has been a huge effort and a lot of stress, and we all look forward, not as much as you, but we all look forward to getting all of that straightened out and getting the ERP squared away and getting us back to where you can do your job and say, I really like coming to work again. That's one of our goals. So we'll get there.
Well, I still like coming to work. I love that I'm doing this. I love what I do, and I love the fact that I'm doing it here. I don't always like the days when I'm here, but I do love what I do.
Good. Well, we appreciate it very much, and that shows in your work, and your work ethic is excellent. So we appreciate that also. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, onward and upward, Kevin. I hope next year is far better and far easier.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to citizens' comments for this evening. I think we have one person signed up, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. On January fourteenth, front page of the Daily Herald, they had an interesting article on TIF. It was on the Spring Hill Mall TIF that started in 2016. The head of the article said, "A 2016 tax district didn't help Spring Hill Mall. Would a new one?" I think there was some confusion on the individuals here. Their concern was, in 2016, the frozen level was seven point six million. In 2021, it had dropped to two point five million. This was their concern on this. But I would ask, is this good, bad, or normal? Because if you remember, in Cantera, it started with a frozen value of eight point two million and decreased to two point one million. There are two forces in a TIF. The first is a revenue force that is simply an overlay of the property tax system. The second force is economic redevelopment. The problem is that these two forces can operate in different directions and at different times. So it is important to have a planning process. The two factors in planning are, first, new construction, second, annual increases in EAV. These annual increases in EAV are what has impacted the homes on Ray Street and impacted many of the individual areas in TIF districts that are not going to be redeveloped. This is why during the public hearing in December on the city's levy, I asked how the stated $29 million of new construction was divided in TIF III, TIF IV, and the other areas of the city of Warrenville. I realize the city has been overburdened. However, I am still waiting for this information.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else who didn't realize they needed to sign up, would like to speak this evening? Okay, we'll keep, we'll move on then to official and staff comments. A couple of things tonight. One is the recognition of Black History Month. In February, we recognize Black History Month and pay tribute to generations of African-Americans who struggled with adversity to achieve full citizenship in American society. You can find resources on exhibits, collections, audio, and video clips at blackhistorymonth.gov. That's pretty straightforward and easy, blackhistorymonth.gov. The city's Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission welcomes feedback, ideas, and suggestions to further the mission of inclusivity and respect for all in Warrenville. Comments may be submitted to idec@warrenville-il.us. And that's all I have for this evening. That's pretty momentous. Clerk? Okay, treasurer, not yet, but soon. Alderman? Alderman Widener?
Yes, there's several sets of minutes that are in this evening's packets, and I just would like they were all presented and accumulated from volunteers and people who sit on volunteer boards, and I just want to recognize all the great volunteers contribute to the Fire and Police Commission, the Environmental Advisory Commission, Tourism and Arts Commission, and the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. All those volunteers make significant contributions to the city of Warrenville. I also want to mention that the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission should also receive some congratulations for the part that they played in the award-winning multicultural event. So we thank all those volunteers who have made significant contributions to the city, and just wanted to remind everyone that Cantera was a most successful TIF in the city of Warrenville, and it was very well managed by the city of Warrenville and resulted in many great facilities being developed, such as the library, Park District, and many other city facilities. So the city does know how to manage TIFs and does a really great job, and I think Cantera is evidence of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor? Mayor?
Did I miss somebody? Yes.
Can I chime in here for a minute?
Sure.
I want to piggyback on something Alderman Widener said when talking about volunteers. At the end of December, a former volunteer for, for the police pension fund, Tim Wing, suddenly passed away, and he had lived in, in the community, and they, he and his wife moved to Ohio. And Tim, along with Charles Schultz, who had also been on the police pension board, did an immense amount of work for that pension board, and they were extremely instrumental in the pension function as well as it has. And while it's no longer in our control, I just thought it was important to recognize what those two gentlemen brought to the community, and they were two of the smartest men I've ever encountered as far as investing and that kind, that kind of thing. They, they both had years and years of experience, and it was instrumental in, in our ability to keep the pension fund as, as, as well as it was. And I just thought, I thought it was extremely important to recognize what the two of them have done.
Thank you, Kevin. And as I recall, both of them very fine people on top of their expertise. They were great to work with and made a great contribution to the community. So thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go on to the city administrator. All right, and city attorney? Okay, thank you, Brooke. Let's approve the agenda for this evening then. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the February sixth, 2023 city council regular meeting.
Second. Motion is second. Any changes proposed for the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes? We have a couple of sets. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth, 2023 city council regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the January twenty-third, 2023 public safety and finance meeting.
Second. Second, Alderman Davalos, discussion of those minutes? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept community development committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2023-01, amending city code and title eight to adopt and make local amendments to the 2021 additions of the International Building Code, Mechanical Code, Fuel-Gas Code, Existing Building Code, Residential Code, Energy Conservation Code, Fire Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the 2020 National Electric Code. B, accept, senior civil engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2023-06, approving the reduction of the public improvements bond for the Lexington Trace Unit Two project. C, accept senior civil engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2023-07, approving the reduction of the public improvements bond for the Lexington Trace Unit Three project. D, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission meeting held on October eighteenth, 2022. E, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners meeting held on October twenty-sixth, 2022. F, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on November fifteenth, 2022. G, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on December fifteenth, 2022. H, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on December twentieth, 2022. I, receive and file minutes of the Plan, Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on January nineteenth, 2023. J, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February first, 2023, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. K, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before February twenty-first, 2023, in the amount of seven hundred, one thousand, three dollars and thirty-six cents. And L, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of January, 2023, in the amount of thirteen thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second. Second again by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Kraschel?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have nothing under a regular agenda, no unfinished business listed for this evening, no new business, no need for a closed session. Who would like to make the final motion?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for your attention and your attendance.